So I thank everyone for their patience and we are going to move forward to a very important agenda item, item number three, final disparity study report. I believe that Jeff is going to just say a couple of words.
Thank you.
We'll move forward.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just very briefly again, just for the the public at at home, the those who might be listening, for about the the last year and a half or so, the county has been in the midst of conducting what is known as a disparity study. The county's spend and procurement activity has been directed to small minority and women-owned business enterprises to the same degree that those enterprises are available and capable of performing that work in the community. So the purpose ultimately of the study is to determine whether or not there is a disparity that exists between what the county had spent, what we would expect to have spent and put towards those enterprises, and what we actually did over the court, over the course of a of a particular study period. And and ultimately, whether any remedies are justified, as would be allowed by by law. So as the board is aware, it's difficult, especially, I can't speak for every community throughout the United States, but especially as a county in Ohio, it's very difficult to make intentional progress towards some of these goals without the backing of a of a disparity study and and the results of that. So the county, under the leadership of of Robert Bell, and he's been working with Steve Love and Jean Ellington, brought in BBC Consulting for this work. We have with us here today Dr. Samir Bawa, who's the BBC Managing Director. So they gave an update to the board, I think a couple of months back, may have been more recently than that, on progress and are here today to provide the final results and and recommendations on that report. So with that, I'd like to introduce Robert, just to provide some remarks before we launch into the study with Dr. Bawa.
Well, you guys have had a really, really heavy agenda, and I really beg your patience today with us.
Certainly.
But I'm excited. I mean, I am excited about this. This is a momentous occasion for Hamilton County. And this study has been long, it's been formidable, it's been necessary, and it's and it's been important. And make no mistake about it, it is a fast research project. It really is. You know, over a year long, looking at 1.3 million dol- 1.3 billion dollars. We had the B O C C departments participate, we had elected offices, we had Metropolitan Sewer District. And I'm reminded of of one of my favorite effective leadership gurus, Peter Drucker, who said, if you can't measure it, you can't improve it. And Hamilton County has been willing to measure itself. Wow. I mean, I'm just really impressed with that. And it's because of you. It's because of the commission and administration that we're at this point. And I and I think Hamilton County needs to be commended for that, I really do. And I also know that if measures show that we need to improve ourselves, that we're totally ready to do that. So I'd like to have call up Samir Bawa, who will give you that report and let you know what we found.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you very much for having me, and it's a pleasure to be here, particularly because this is, I think, the longest I've ever gone without meeting a client as part of one of these studies in person. And we have COVID, so thank for that, so I'm I'm very happy to be here. I, along with my partner, Ms. Iris McClish, led the 2022 Hamilton County and the Metropolitan Sewer District Disparity Study. Iris is actually on the phone today, as is one of our associates, Stephanie Ayers, and if there are detailed questions that I can't answer about the data, one of those two will look it up and be able to chime in as well.
It doesn't want to go?
It doesn't want to go. There you go. Oh, I got it now. Thank you. So very quickly, I want to review our core objectives for the disparity study. And really, at the crux of it was to measure the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses in Hamilton County and MSD contracting and procurement relative to their availability for that work, and then assess whether there are any differences or disparities between those measures. And I will unpack all of those terms in just a couple of minutes. We also provided an extensive set of quantitative and qualitative analyses of conditions throughout the local marketplace to understand whether minorities, women, and minority and woman-owned businesses face any barriers that make it more difficult for them to compete for and perform Hamilton County and MSD contracts. We collected a great deal of anecdotal evidence, as well as qualitative insights from business owners and other stakeholders to provide context for some of the quantitative analyses that we observed, as well as provide answers to the question of why some of those barriers might exist. And then finally, based on all that information, we have a number of recommendations that we think could help Hamilton County and MSD do a better job of encouraging the participation of small businesses, as well as minority and woman-owned businesses in their contracting moving forward. So right off the bat, I'd like to just sort of dive into our key results before I get into some of the details, and it'd be helpful if you just kept those in mind as we went along, because they they really frame some of the the analyses that I'll talk about on subsequent slides. So first, we observed substantial disparities for all relevant business groups across different sets of Hamilton County and MSD contracts. And that includes businesses owned by white women, black Americans, Hispanic Americans, Native Americans, and Asian Americans. In addition, even when Hamilton County and MSD were spending money with minority and woman-owned businesses, when we dug into those dollars, there seems to be some issues with those dollars being concentrated in relatively few hands. That is, the the majority of the dollars going to minority and woman-owned businesses are actually going to a handful of firms in many cases for for each one of these groups. And our analysis of the policies and programs that Hamilton County and MSD are using suggests that those current measures aren't sufficient to address barriers that still exist for minority and woman-owned businesses throughout the marketplace and those attempting to work with those agencies. Digging into the results themselves, I want to start by talking about what we call the availability analysis, which is designed to estimate the percentage of dollars we would expect minority and woman-owned businesses to receive on Hamilton County and MSD work. We use what's called a custom census approach to measuring availability, which is built on us first developing a phone book of all the businesses that have a location within the relevant marketplace and that do work directly relevant to how Hamilton County and MSD procure goods and services. Once we established that phone book, we went through it and contacted each and every firm and asked them to participate in a survey with us so that we could collect details about their business characteristics. So we asked them about their primary lines of work, their capacity to actually bid on or perform Hamilton County or MSD contracts or procurement. So we just asked them, what's the largest contract you can compete for or perform? Their roles as vendors, so do they work as prime contractors, subcontractors, or both? Their interest in doing contracting work for government organizations in the region, and then the race, ethnicity, and gender of their owners, regardless of whether they've made the decision to become certified as MBEs, WBEs, DBs, SBEs, or any other sort of certification. So this is just the ownership and control of their businesses. Once we collected that information, we compiled what we call an availability database that included the characteristics of each business that completed a survey with us and allowed us to compare those characteristics to the characteristics of each individual contract and procurement that Hamilton County and MSD awarded during our study period. So that allowed us to figure out which firms could be potentially available for each contract and procurement, and then aggregate that information in a dollar-weighted way so that at the end of the process, we had an estimate of the percentage of dollars that we would expect minority and woman-owned businesses to receive on that work based on their characteristics and the characteristics of the prime contracts and subcontracts that both agencies awarded. So in total, and this circle just represents all of the dollars we include in our analysis for both Hamilton County and MSD combined, we looked at 1.3 billion dollars of contracting and procurement, as Robert mentioned. And our analysis suggested that based on their availability, 26% of those dollars should be going to minority and woman-owned businesses, or 338 million. Availability varies from group to group. So the group that showed the highest level of availability was white woman-owned businesses at 8.8%, followed by black American-owned businesses at 7.2%, and Asian American-owned businesses at 7%. I'll talk about the utility of availability in just a bit, but another one of our core measures was to understand, how many dollars did minority and woman-owned businesses actually receive on Hamilton County and MSD contracts during our study period? So this is called the utilization analysis, and it's based on a trove of information we collected from Hamilton County and MSD itself on the contracts and procurements it awarded during the study period, as well as the vendors that performed that work. And then, once we compiled that information, we went out and conducted more surveys with businesses that actually performed the work, so we could understand their basic characteristics. In terms of agency data, we based our analyses on professional services, construction and goods and non-professional services work that both agencies awarded between January 1st, 2016, and June 30th, 2021. So a five-and-a-half-year study period, and that included both prime contracts and subcontracts. Once we worked with both agencies to make sense of that information and make sure that we're representing it accurately, we went into the field, and for all the firms that did work or performed that work, we wanted to establish two key pieces of information. So first, what are their primary lines of work, which allows us to classify each contract appropriately? And second, what's the race, ethnicity, and gender of their owners? And again, that's regardless of whether they're certified in any sort of way. It's just about the race, ethnicity, and gender of ownership, per se. We integrated that information with the data that we collected from Hamilton County and MSD, and then we were able to calculate the percentage of dollars that actually went to minority and woman-owned businesses during our five-and-a-half-year study period. So going back to that 1.3 billion dollars, and again, this includes both Hamilton County and MSD combined, our analysis suggested that 8.1% went to minority and woman-owned businesses, so about 106 million dollars. And just like availability, utilization varied by group. So white woman-owned businesses showed the highest level of participation at 5.1%, followed by black American-owned businesses at 1.5%, and then Asian American-owned businesses at 1.3%. And then very little dollars, very few dollars, I should say, went to Hispanic American or Native American-owned businesses. Once we completed both the availability analysis and the utilization analysis, we're in position to compare those metrics, to see if any business groups were underutilized on either Hamilton County or MSD contracts. And we did that for each of the the five relevant business groups, and also for different sets of contracts and procurement. So we looked at disparities that might exist in construction versus professional services, in prime contracts versus subcontracts, separately for Hamilton County versus MSD, so forth and so on. And we used a relatively straightforward calculation to make that assessment. So for a particular group and a particular set of contracts, we took the dollars that businesses from that group were actually awarded, divided by the dollars that we estimated them to be available for, times 100. And that results in what's called a disparity index or a disparity ratio. So a disparity index of 100 means that actual participation is largely in line with availability. It's also called parity between utilization and availability. A disparity index of less than 100 indicates a disparity such that that group for that set of contracts is being underutilized relative to their availability. And then importantly, a disparity index of 80 or less indicates substantial underutilization. So courts that have weighed in on minority and woman-owned business programs, as well as disparity study methodology, take substantial underutilization as an inference of discrimination against a group in the marketplace, and that often serves as support for the use of relatively strong race and gender-conscious measures to help address corresponding barriers for those groups. So I'm going to show disparity analysis results in the same format. They'll all sort of look like this table. There'll be fewer words on the on the subsequent slides, but essentially, we have a line drawn at 100, which is our line of parity, and a dash line drawn at 80, which is our line indicating a substantial underutilization. Anything to the left of those lines means that that group showed a disparity index that was either indicating underutilization or substantial underutilization if it's under, if it's left of that 80 line. And then on the vertical axis, you have all the groups that we analyzed as part of the study. So all minority and woman-owned businesses considered together, white woman-owned businesses, and then Asian, black, Hispanic, and Native American-owned businesses. And this is a good time to also note that when we talk about racial, ethnic groups, so let's take Asian American-owned businesses in particular, or as an example, that includes businesses owned by both Asian men and Asian women. So when we talk about woman-owned businesses, we have those separated out as white woman-owned businesses. So the county's disparity indices on this chart are shown in the darker bars, and MSD's disparity indices are shown in the lighter gray bars. So starting with the county, when you look at all minority and woman-owned businesses together, they showed a disparity index of 52. What that means is, is that minority and woman-owned businesses considered together earned 52 cents of every dollar you would expect them to receive based on their availability for county work. And for the most part, that's a substantial disparity, and for the most part, that extends to each individual business group that we examined as well. So Asian Americans, black Americans, Hispanic Americans, and Native American-owned businesses all showed substantial disparities on county contracts and procurements. The only exception was white woman-owned businesses, which showed disparity index of 86. So they're still showing a disparity, just not one that falls to the level that many courts consider to be substantial disparities. A note on white woman-owned businesses, in total, on county contracts, they received about 54 million dollars during our five-and-a-half-year study period. 35 million of those dollars went to a single white woman-owned business. They're headquartered in St. Louis, Missouri. They have an office here in Hamilton County or in Cincinnati, the Cincinnati area as well. But that does suggest that there may be some issues of of concentration that I that I brought up earlier in the presentation, that more than 60% of the dollars, or about 60% of dollars, went to a single white woman-owned business when you look at that group alone. Looking at disparity indices for MSD overall, you see substantial disparities across the board. So all minority and woman-owned businesses showed a disparity index of 17, and then all individual groups also showed substantial disparities, many of them in single digits. We also looked at these data for different contract sets, and one important comparison that we we made was between outcomes for minority and woman-owned businesses between prime contracts and subcontracts. So minority and woman-owned businesses, in general, tend to be smaller in size, or at least many of them are are small in size, and as a result, their entryway into government contracting tends to be as subcontractors. So it's useful to look at outcomes on subcontracts versus prime contracts to see if they are showing any more success for contracts that are more accessible to them, generally speaking. In the case of the county, that isn't necessarily true. So we saw substantial disparities for all groups for both prime contracts and subcontracts, with the one exception being white woman-owned businesses on prime contracts. And again, that is primarily due to the fact that there is that one white woman-owned business that received the majority of of the dollars, and that was as a as a prime, as a prime contractor. In all other cases, you see that minority and woman-owned businesses are showing substantial disparities across the board. In terms of MSDGC, so they're doing a little better on subcontracts, and that could be a function of some of the programs that they have in place that are designed to encourage small business participation as as subcontractors primarily. But by and large, you still see some important disparities here. So all minority and woman-owned businesses considered together show substantial disparities for both prime contracts and subcontracts. All individual groups show substantial disparities for prime contracts, which are shown in the darker bars. And then white woman-owned businesses, Hispanic American-owned businesses, and Native American-owned businesses also show substantial disparities on subcontracts. Asian Americans and black Americans do not show substantial disparities for subcontracts, but when you take that in for, when you take those data and combine them with prime contracts, you still see large disparities overall, just because there isn't enough volume of subcontracts to make up for the disparities that we that we observed overall or for prime We also wanted to look at outcomes that result from the different small business plans and small business programs that the county and MSD have in place. So one question that is reasonable to ask is, are sort of race and gender-neutral measures, measures designed to encourage all small businesses to participate in county and MSD contracting, is that sufficient to address these barriers? So we started answering that question by first looking at the SBE plans that the county now uses. So during the study period, during the earlier part of the study period, the county didn't use SBE plans. And then in the last year of it, they started requiring prime contractors to submit plans as part of bids and proposals outlining the efforts they were making to engage with small businesses independent of race, ethnicity, and gender. And those sorts of, those sorts of programs sometimes had the indirect effect of also helping minority and woman-owned businesses, because so many of them are small in size and may work as subcontractors and can can team as subcontractors on these projects. There, these evidence, these data suggest that there was limited success of the use of SBE plans to address disparities. So before SBE plans went into effect, there were substantial disparities for all groups except for white woman-owned businesses. And then after those SBE plans went into full effect in the last year of our study period, there are still substantial disparities for all groups, and actually including white woman-owned businesses as well, which is probably just a function, again, of that one white woman-owned business and when that firm got its, got it, got the majority of its dollars, which was earlier in the study period. Similarly, MSDGC uses small business goals on many of its contracts. So as part of that goals program, prime contractors have to meet a percentage goal for all small businesses on the projects they're bidding on or proposing on, and they can meet those goals either by making subcontracting commitments with certified small businesses or showing good faith efforts, that they tried to do so, but for whatever reason might have failed. And those efforts, they have to demonstrate that those efforts were sufficient and genuine. So we looked at outcomes for minority and woman-owned businesses on contracts MSD ordered with SBE goals and without SBE goals, with the idea that if those SBE goals are also effective in encouraging minority and woman-owned business participation, you might see fewer disparities or some improvement in outcomes. That isn't the case. So we see substantial disparities, again, across the board. And if anything, and this could be because of contract size or other factors, you actually see worse outcomes on contracts that MSD awarded without SBE goals than than with them. So that doesn't necessarily suggest anything's wrong with the SBE program, but at the very least, it suggests that it's not effective in improving outcomes for minority and woman-owned businesses in particular. And I should mention, as part of the county's small business program, not only do they have those plans, but they also use SBE goals in awarding certain contracts as well. But so on the previous slide, that was sort of the the aggregate effect of of their small business measures. Just as a visualization of all the different contract sets for which we assessed disparities, we put together this table where on the vertical axis, these are all the different contract sets we looked at, or most of the different contract sets we looked at. And then going across horizontally are each one of the individual groups. And each one of these green dots indicates that for that group, for that contract set, we observed a substantial disparity. And I think the takeaway here is, you see a lot of green dots. That is, there are substantial disparities for almost all contract sets, for almost all groups. White woman-owned businesses are faring a little better, not on MSDGC contracts, but certainly on county work. But a lot of that is likely due to the fact, again, to that one white woman-owned business that received more than 60% of the total dollars that went to those businesses. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, a number of recommendations came out of the disparity study and things that we think is are important for the county and MSD to consider moving forward in terms of refining its policies and programs. I'm going to go over some key recommendations, but in chapter 10 of our report, there's many more, more than 20 different recommendations related to procurement policies, program measures, and just administration of a program and data collection and things like that. But there are a handful that I wanted to talk about here today, beginning with overall aspirational goals. So we think that it might be useful for the county and MSD to consider establishing overall aspirational goals for the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses in their work. This is not a race or gender-based measure, per se, but rather, it's aspirational in the sense that the county and MSD would set this, and then at the end of the year, sort of monitor their spend with minority and woman-owned businesses through a variety of efforts and see if they're achieving that goal. And if they haven't achieved that goal, make changes, make refinements to its programs and policies to meet that goal the following year. So it's really a tool that helps unify some organizations around their supplier diversity objectives and also keeps the organizations internally and externally accountable for for their use and participation of minority and woman-owned businesses. One of the specific measures we think that the county and MSD could consider in encouraging the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses, and this is a race and gender-based recommendation, is the use of minority and woman-owned business contracting goals. So based on the fact that we see substantial disparities for all groups across key contract sets that both the county and MSD awarded during the study period, we think that it would be useful for the county and MSD to think about whether it is appropriate to set contracting goals on individual contracts and procurements they award for the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses in particular. So lots of organizations across the country use programs like this. There are a ton of legal considerations and policy considerations to make, but the gist of it is, is that county purchasing staff and and officers, when they're soliciting a contracting opportunity, and this would go for MSD as well, would sit down and set a goal based on the availability of minority and woman-owned businesses for the work involved, the size of the contract, other factors as well. And then prime contractors, as part of their bids or proposals, would have to meet that goal, either by making subcontract commitments with certified minority and woman-owned businesses, being certified minority and woman-owned businesses themselves, or if those fail, showing good faith efforts, that they made genuine efforts to bring in minority and woman-owned businesses into their proposal or the process and failed to do so. And then the county or MSD would assess whether those good faith efforts were sufficient. And this would be as a condition of award. So the goals would ideally vary from contract to contract based on the variance of the factors I I mentioned. Sometimes the county or MSD wouldn't even set a goal on a contract. The idea is that in aggregate, the use of these goals would be another tool the county could use to directly encourage the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses. In terms of some of the legal considerations that the county would have to make, the most important is that programs like this have to meet the strict scrutiny standard of constitutional review, which means that they have to, that the county has to show a compelling governmental interest for the use of those programs, which means that there just has to be evidence that discrimination in the larger marketplace exists that's impacting the county's own contracting procurement. And then second, the use of those programs have to be narrowly tailored to meet the objectives of the program. And we can talk about that, and we do at length in the report, but that is the most important consideration in terms of implementing a program of this sort. And often, when there are substantial disparities for many groups across many contract sets, this is something that organizations often consider implementing to help address. this is something that organizations often consider implementing to help address those barriers. We also think, based on disparity study results, as well as measures that we've seen other organizations use, that implementing subcontracting minimums might be worth considering as well. So, a subcontracting minimum would entail, much like setting a small business goal or a minority or woman-owned business goal, based on subcontracting opportunities involved in a project, the county or MSD would set a minimum percentage of subcontracting when they're soliciting a project. And prime contractors would have to meet that minimum with their, with their subcontract, with subcontractors of their choosing, independent of race, ethnicity, and gender, or show good faith efforts that they try to bring subcontractors into the process. The idea behind these is that the less work that large prime contractors are self-performing means more opportunities for small businesses in the marketplace, and you're bringing more firms into the county and MSD's contracting processes. Another race and gender-neutral measure that the county could consider are small business price and evaluation preferences. So, whether it be an RFP or a low-bid bidding environment, certified small businesses, or the involvement of certified small business prime contractor, or subcontractors would earn bidders and proposers evaluation points, if it's an RFP, or price discounts if it's, if it's a low-bid award. And again, the idea is the same, that it is incentivizing prime contractors and firms to either come in with subcontracting, with small business partners, or it is encouraging small businesses themselves to bid on Hamilton County and MSD work as, as prime contractors themselves. There are also a number of professional services that the county, according to county procurement policies, are not subject to competitive bidding requirements. By and large, the fewer, the fewer competitive requirements on a contract, the less supplier diversity, because buyers, purchasing, purchasing staff tend to go with what's comfortable. If they've used a firm in the past, they'll try to use them again, especially if the work was successful. And that limits the different number of, or the pool of vendors that are coming in and competing for work. So, anything the county and MSD can do to encourage competitive bidding is a good thing for supplier diversity. In the case of professional services, there are a number of sub-industries that are exempt from competitive bidding. That includes engineering services, it includes construction management, legal services, accounting, physicians. There's a number of these where, to the degree possible, if the county or MSD could consider opening those up to competitive bidding processes, obviously, there's more administrative burden when you do that. But, we think it also helps to encourage supplier diversity in those areas. And currently, that's not necessarily the case. And then, one other consideration that we wanted to highlight is related to prompt pay. So, MSD actually has very strong prompt pay policies in place. So, they are required to pay their prime contractors within 30 days of approving an invoice. And then, those prime contractors have to pay subcontractors within 10 days of getting paid from MSD. And if they don't, then the juice starts running. They have to pay interest for every day that, that they're late past, past 10 days. The county actually doesn't have any established prompt pay policies. And we think it's important for the county, not only to have prompt pay to prime contractors, but also to get involved in payment between prime contractors and subcontractors, because many of those subcontractors are small businesses. Many of those small businesses are minority and woman-owned businesses. And they simply can't afford, or can afford much less, to wait long periods of time to get paid on work that they've completed, because that helps them make payroll, it helps them have capital on hand to get their next project started, and access to capital is already a problem, which we talk about a, a great deal in the report. And any delays in payment make that even worse. So, establishing prompt payment is something that lots of government organizations do, and we have models from across the country on how to enforce prompt payment between the agency and prime contractors, and then, in turn, between prime contractors and subcontractors that we're happy to discuss and share as well. As I said, there's a lot more detail about these six considerations in chapter 10 of the report, as well as details about additional considerations as well. And now, I'd like to open it up to answer any questions, unless there are questions about levies, which I don't know anything about.
Wow, a lot of great information. A lot of information that was given to us, we've been talking about, but we have to have the ability to prove what we thought may be going on. So, I applaud the group that has been involved in this. And of course, I'll talk about recommendations in a minute. But, I was wondering about the level of cooperation when you started the phone calls and the surveys. Were the businesses pretty cooperative, or the percentage that were involved in this process?
Yeah, by and large, they were. So, we, you know, our response rates have been steadily increasing. And part of that reason is that we use a survey firm, and we started before we conducted the Hamilton County work, that we've worked together with, for years, and they're just great. They're great at getting, when they get people, when they contact people, either via telephone or online, that they get them to complete a survey. So, our response rates, I don't know what it was off the top of my head, but I think that it was in the high teens, 20%, which for business-to-business surveys is, is quite good. So, we're, we were very happy with, with that. You know, we would worry if it was much less than our other disparity studies, but right now, we're in an upward trend of response rate, so we're, we're really happy with.
That's great. I'm sure they wanted to tell their story, and hopefully, that will end up with getting more business. So, I think about, one of your recommendations that I didn't really see up there is the marketing aspect of it, that a lot of people don't know that there's a opportunity to bid, if we are bidding, or that, for instance, our janitorial RFP, we put out for this whole building, and we had suggested, well, I suggested that maybe you just have a smaller business, maybe do two floors, and another business, you know, do the other, instead of bidding on the whole building. So, I think the problem is, one of the problems, lots of problems you've brought up, but we have solutions, I'm sure, is that even when they find, find out about the opportunities, even though they're qualified, oftentimes are not considered. And so, that's what we need to look at. Why are people putting their names in the pool and it's not coming out of the hat? So, of course, we need to look at that. We've talked about diversifying the people that are chosen. I think what's happened with this study, and I'm just so happy about it, is that we have something that we can look at. And it's not just, we think this is happening. We've heard contractors say that they can't get an opportunity to, to work here. And we're doing great things, but we need to do even greater things and then be more inclusive, and the recommenda, recommendations are awesome. And so, we just need to move forward quickly, because I think about the ones who have put in for different positions, different opportunities, and they just say, forget about the county. But the county is doing great work, and we need to make sure the ones that are qualified to do it are considered. I was really surprised when you said about the competitive bidding. I know you said there are different areas that don't have to have the bidding, but we really need to look at that. I had, when I first came, wanted to sit in during the bidding process. And, and so, by the time whoever is going to get this contract, they've already somewhat been decided. So, me sitting in, watching that process would not help. But I thank the whole group that's here, all the work that's been done. And so, now, we have something to put our finger on through statistical information that we need to do better. And I'm sure I promise to do better, and that our board will also, and we're going to move forward very quickly to make sure that we're more inclusive of the people that put in for positions. Thank you so much for your report.
Of course.
Vice President Reese?
Thank you, thank you for your report. I think the, the full report is about 800, almost pages.
Something like that, yeah, sorry about that.
So, I may have questions, it's in the 800 pages. I'm working, I'm working my way through it.
Absolutely. I can tell you which sections you may not have to read either.
Good. I love this, like, people love football or basketball. You know, I love both of those sports too, so I get in the weeds on it.
Yeah.
And coming from a Black-owned, family-owned business, this is how I grew up. So, seeing, and this is before we had disparity studies, we had contract compliance. Those things were just not out there. And so, just growing up with that, and then going on to a historically Black college and university down south and seeing so many business owners, and then understanding and seeing, I'm like, wow, why is the South doing better than the North? They've got contracts, they're doing business with the government. And I have a philosophy that's really simple, and I know that I'm going to continue to fight this at every level. And my point is, we cannot have taxation without participation. I think we need to start this conversation off, because this is not a handout or a carve-out. These are companies, small businesses, women-owned, Black-owned, minority-owned, who, for some reason, Uncle Sam can find them. We're equal on tax day and unequal every other day. It's the only group of businesses that have to go through this on a regular basis to prove that they exist and that they are minority. But on tax day, somehow, our Treasury Department can find them. Somehow, the federal government can find them and say, you owe this money. And they say, you are a small business, and you are legitimate. So, if somehow, we can merge the two of those, one of the, so one of the things we're trying to correct is that there's a group of people that have small businesses, services, that are qualified and bona fide, but have been left out and locked out. And when I look around the room, it's great to see these familiar faces, Steve Love and Mr. Ellington, and so many. But, I also wonder, man, they don't follow me from City Hall to the State House, and now, we're at the county, and we're talking about the same thing. Minority businesses being locked out. I think that certainly, our board is taking a bold step, no offense to your bold list. But you know how I feel about it. I think what's bold is when we get to the contracts. I think Mr. Bell understands that, that we're not trying to get on the list, but we're trying to get in the marketplace. And so, what we're trying to do is figure out a way, how do we open up the marketplace so that everyone can participate and have an equal shot at the American dream? And to do that, unfortunately, we see that nationally and internationally, we saw it on national TV with now Supreme Court Justice Katanji Brown. When she was up there, she was overqualified, and we saw it on TV. Said, man, how could you not? I mean, this woman has the education, I mean, she got it all. And still, has to go through a scrutiny process that's tough. That's what's happening with women-owned businesses, Black-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses. They go through a tougher scrutiny, because they have to get certification. It costs money to certify. There's no need to certify if I can't get no contracts. So, we have to now move from certification to contract signings. And I want to acknowledge our administrator. When I got here, I know, he's probably here, he says, I hear it from her all the time. I said, we got to change the DNA of Hamilton County. We have been doing business a certain way for decades and decades. And sometimes, it's hard to break that mold, and that's what we're doing. This board has been breaking up that mold. And my philosophy, when I got elected, about 212,000 people, I said, I'm coming to shake it up. I'm giving, to open up the process, and I want to make sure that everybody has an equal shot. So, your presentation has been great. I want to get into a couple areas, if you don't mind.
No.
That I think are critical. Number one, I want to put on your list that we have since hiring your company, we have not only an equity and inclusion office, but we have now an office of small business. The two will come together, and we would like to see in the recommendation how those two can correlate, although they might, our small business is for every small business, but we want to make sure that we have an umbrella. And that umbrella, our goal is to be the number-one county for small businesses. COVID has provided a reset, and McDonald's is known for the Big Mac. Frisco's is known for the Big Boy. We want to be known as the place for small businesses, and diverse small businesses. So, I'd like to make sure that they're included as they're putting their presentation together for us through our administrator, what that small business office will do in concert and partnership with our equity and inclusion office. Number two, I wanted to ask you, in your presentation, you combined us with MSD. And it's no secret that we have an interesting infrastructure agreement as it relates to MSD. So, we kind of control the county, although we control MSD money, but we don't really control MSD 100%.
Right.
So, I wanted to make sure, in this model, if you will, that Phase One would look at, what can the county do? And remove MSD, and they got to, of course, look at what we do, and we'll oversight that. But we need to know, what can we do, what is our numbers as it relates to just all the things that Hamilton County falls up under our board?
Yep, and just a little context for that.
Yeah.
MSD was added to the process a little later. And throughout the report, their, their numbers are separate. The county has a separate set of analyses, and MSD has a separate set of analyses. We combined them for the first two slides for a couple of reasons, mostly just illustration of how those analyses work, and also just for time, to make sure that I could get to the disparity.
No, no, that's good. I just, I just want to make sure, in our recommendation section.
Exactly, yeah. Our recommendations are mostly geared toward county policies.
Got you.
Because that's really what sort of guides, that's what guided our work and our review. And then, where it's unique and specific, we have some MSD recommendations as well, but we try to keep the two separate.
Okay, and it's good for us to see it. I just want to have it compartmentalized.
Yep.
For, for our component. Now, you referenced several times that the women category, the white women category, was kind of padded in that we had one company. You said they're out of St. Louis, but got an office here. And I wanted to find out, what area of work is that? Is that professional services, is that consulting, is that construction? Where are they, where do they fall?
They would be, this is a question actually for Stephanie. My guess is, they're going to be a goods and other services provider. They do, they do transit, essentially. So, they're, they're a transit firm. I guess it just depends on where we end up classifying them, but it would either be professional services or goods and other services.
I'm just wondering, are they in the bid side or the non-bid side of things?
Well, if they're goods and other services, they'd be on the bid side. And if they're in professional services, they'd be an RFP side, right?
I think it's good, I think it's goods and services.
I think so too.
Okay, yeah, I just, I'd like to know that. If they're in the non-bid side of things, or in the bid side of things.
My understanding is that they do get, I mean, they do put out, they have a bid, but it's an extended contract.
You got, the people watching, they want to hear from you. What, what are you saying? Come on up, director.
My, my understanding that it is a bid, bid and process by John Family Services.
Okay, so that is a bid, but we'll double-check it, just to make sure.
We, yeah, we definitely will.
That seems kind of odd, that they're outbidding everybody. And you said it's a single source. But that's what leads that category, because of the size of the amount of the contract, right?
Yeah, but it's also a, a very niche piece of work. So, it's medical transit, medical transportation. So, I would imagine that it's, it's probably not just outbidding other competitors. It may be that it's so specialized that this is, this is where their dollars are going. But, it's also one of those things worth mentioning, only because there isn't a great solution for it from a statistics or a research perspective, because they're not so big as to be, for example, a statistical outlier. But, I think that it's worth mentioning, because it also runs counter to the spirit of a program like this, right? That these aren't designed so that in aggregate, one business gets the dollars to make women-owned businesses look better in aggregate. It's, it seems to be that what the county may want is sort of a diverse set of diverse businesses.
Yeah.
And so, that information to us is informative for, for you all, just to realize that, at least in this, this one category, and in others as well, there are a few big players even within the category, and they tend to benefit from small business measures and things like that more than other businesses in the same racial, ethnic, or gender categories.
Yeah, I know, I got that. I, I understand you're showing that, don't look at this category and think it's a bunch of white women businesses.
Right.
Having opportunities, that numbers with one. I just wanted to know, was it on the non-bid side versus the bid side? Because I know we're talking about professional services versus contractual services. And so, I wanted to know what that, where that fell, and why, you know, where that fell, and, and see if those were some other issues. where did that fail and, and, and see if those were, were some other issues.
I think we got, we got somebody who wants to, in your, in your.
Oh, good. Iris, you're on mute, but I think you're live.
Hi, thanks very much. This is Iris. Um, yeah, so they fell into goods and other services, and I think Robert is exactly right. That was a, it was certainly a, a bidded contract through Jobs and Family Services. But I believe that that was open to competitive bidding, but it would have been on the bid side.
Great, thank you. Um, uh, the other issue I wanted to bring up to you was, um, President Dumas, uh, touched on it before, and I think going back to this part. Did you look at anything in terms of breaking up contracts? Because, uh, when we look at, at breaking up contracts and what are some of the barriers? Because doing, if you're a small business, doing business with the county is very difficult as is. Uh, we do a reimbursable program, and we're not the fastest in town with it. Uh, the paperwork is extensive. Uh, you've got to, you know, you put up almost everything, you know. You own, as people would say, you got everything on the line and your underwear. Um, it's very difficult with the paperwork. It's not that way with our bigger contracts. We might have a hypothet, a Port Authority contract at $2 million is two pages, and $150,000 contract is 20 pages. Um, and that might be because they're a smaller group, but had you looked at some of those barriers, uh, breaking up bids, uh, looking at some of the barriers, bonding requirements, insurance requirements, I understand we're putting extra squeeze insurance requirements on folks. Um, and our reimbursement program, certainly we want to be responsible. We not just throwing money out there. But are there other counties across the country, uh, that might have something that breaks up contracts, make it easier for insurance opportunities, and break some of these barriers down?
Yeah, so we, um, we have a lot of information on contract size and project size, especially in government contracting being a barrier. Uh, lots of people mention that. We also have a consideration a- around unbundling. Um, you know, the upside, of course, uh, from a diversity perspective is that if you have 10, uh, $100,000 contracts instead of $1 million project, you are attracting more minority and women-owned businesses for the reasons that you talked about. It's easier to bond for that work, it's easier to get insured for that work, so forth and so on. Of course, the downside is the administrative burden it puts on the organization, that just managing, uh, 10 related contracts instead of one project, uh, kind of takes some of the GC responsibilities and puts them with the county instead of with, with whoever, with whatever you hire. So that's, that's kind of the trade-off, but, um, lots of organizations talk about this. I can't think of sort of a concrete set of best practices that they've done. It's, to be honest, a lot of lip service around, yes, we're thinking about that, that would definitely help, but I can't think of a great model, I guess.
Gotcha. Well, we want to move out of lip service and get to action, uh, so we can be the model that everybody comes here, and they'll pay these guys the big bucks to replicate what we do. Prompt pay. You talked about MSD, so I wrote that law. That's when the county, the city and MSD had to do what the city wanted you to do. Um, I had a chance to see what was going on nationally, and that was the issue that a lot of businesses were saying, no matter what your color is. This helps small businesses across the.
For sure, yeah.
Board, but particularly extra for minority businesses. Uh, I know that, uh, we have to look at what, because I don't think we write the checks. It's got to be us and partner with the auditor and those kind of things. And I also put the language in there, that if every day you don't, if they got all the right paperwork, and can't just sit on someone's desk and say, well, I'll get to it when I get to it. Because we, you started losing money, and that really got the, um, the government entities to get to moving on these, get these things processed.
Yeah.
Because if we find out you're helping lose us money, then you got to go. So your job is on the line. And you have now the pressure that the small business has. You just don't sit there and say, I got my check, and we'll get to you when we get to you. So prompt pay helped a lot. We did tie that, if we, I just want to put this out there. You got to have the prompt pay piece. It has to have the penalty piece. Without the penalty piece, it's not gonna, it's gonna be lip service.
Right.
Um, but then also, we got to pull in possibly the treasurer's office, uh, because they determined what bank we use. The, the issue with prompt pay is, we want, if we do prompt pay, you can go to the bank, and the bank would acknowledge that the government's check is good, and that you can now borrow working capital o- against the contract, and not have to give up your house, your car, and everything else, because they know the government is guaranteed to pay you in a prompt way with a timetable. But you got to also have the banking institution. Where we put our money as, uh, public people, we put the public's money, it has to be tied to a bank that is not discriminatory and that would honor our prompt pay, prompt pay policy. And also, on the backside, be able to provide the working capital. So hopefully, I know you're 800 pages, but if it's not in there, and when we get to the, the real meat of the rec, I know these are just components, then we got to get to the whole meat.
It's in there, I see.
Um, but I, I think that that is, uh, like you said, it actually, uh, works. So those are the things that I wa, I wanted to just, right now, I just wanted to, to highlight. Um, and I think you're absolutely, we do need to look at the subcontracting because we're not doing well in that area. But that's the area, if it were to be done correctly, maybe can reduce those barriers. We do that all the time with contracts. We just had council on aging. And then we said, hey, we want you partner with smaller organizations, and so they're able to do all the paperwork and all that, but then the small organization could be in there. So we are making, um, some improvement. I want to, I don't want to clap, because every week, we're voting on millions and millions. And so when I got here to see one quarter, we had $1,400. That's it, for every minority group that existed, for the banks, it ain't a clap. We do billions. We speak in billions. So, um, I'm not gonna get, um, I give us credit on a lot of stuff, but we're not there yet. Um, and I'd like to know, a- after this, how fast do we move now from, you gave us the data. We needed the numbers for what we already knew, but we needed the numbers, um, because that's the law. How do we move from this to now, let's get some people? Because people are now saying, uh, they may not apply for these contracts. Because the other thing, they need to know that we're real, and if you're not real, what happens is they say, oh, won't you apply? And you go and fill out all this paperwork, and they just want to put on a list. We tried, you on the list.
Right.
And they're not serious, and we, and we are serious. Our administration, to our, our board, to our administration, we want to get it out. We're serious. So I don't know what happens. I'd like to know how we, where do we move from here?
From here, um, so this is the trove of information. Uh, next is program development. Um, and, um, you know, whoever you want to sort of help develop the program, that can start now. Um, and, you know, it can, it can, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made along the way. Uh, and to be frank, uh, Robert probably needs some help, because I just don't. I, I was surprised to learn that Robert's office is Robert. Uh, it's a lot.
We added two now. He brought it up to three. He moving on up.
It's a lot to put on a single individual, and, you know, there's just a lot of moving parts with compliance, with setting goals, with figuring out who's gonna do that, how that's gonna get done, what that process looks like. All that work can literally start tomorrow. Um, and it, it, you know, the sooner that that work gets going, the sooner that you have a program that is effective with details and that you can stand up, um, yeah, it's really, it's really in, in the county's hands at this point, once, once they've sort of wrapped their heads around, um, the implications of, of all these results, which we're, which we're happy to help with.
Madam President, they done passed us two patons, one in each hand. I'm ready to get going, so quicker we can move, I'm, I'm in. So thank you, Madam President.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Did you want to say something?
I'll answer a question when he's done.
Okay.
About what next step.
Sure, okay. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for this report. Uh, I told you earlier, it's just very thorough. It's very well done. It's, it's readable. I mean, it's a digestible report that gets us to where we need to be. Uh, and I appreciate the partners in the room. Thank you for helping move us in this direction. It's, it's a critical moment in time for the county. So, Robert, I agree, it's a momentous occasion for the county. Um, we passed, I think it was about two years ago, the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in Hamilton County. There were three tenants, uh, related to that resolution. One was training for the sheriff's office, one was expansion of your office in, including the word equity, and one was the disparity study. And so here we are, uh, making good on our promise of two years ago with a completed report that gives us the opportunity to move. Uh, and so it's an important report. It's a critical moment in time that will help change the culture of the county. And, and now we can change the practices of the county to reflect what you have been hearing, uh, from this board as to where we want to go. Um, so legally, we needed to do it. Uh, I'm glad we're there. It took some time. Um, but it's well done, and I'm, I'm sure that we can count on it to, uh, enable us to do some of these things that we have been not able to do in the past, that haven't moved the numbers like any of us want to see, right? We're just not where we need to be. Um, so a- a- as Commissioner Reese said, I think it proved to us what we think we already knew. You know, but we just needed to have it in writing, and we needed to have the proof. Um, so thank you for that. Um, I have a question related to your, um, considerations or your recommendations.
Yes.
Um, especially interested in number two, the implement contract-specific goals for the participation of minority and women-owned businesses. So you talked about how you evaluate that when we are working with a business to make sure they understand that these are our goals and these are things, you know, critical points that you need to meet. Um, you mentioned the evaluation process happening as the bids were coming in. So, uh, help me understand that a little bit better.
Yeah, so i- it would carry on for the life of the project, but I can talk about that too. That's more of a compliance issue. But, uh, really, these goals, when they're effective, are condition of award goals. So if you're going out for, let's say, a $20 million construction contract, uh, there is an internal team, uh, of experts that sit down, so you would sit down with Public Works, uh, or Robert's office would sit down with Public Works, and we'd, you'd look at availability for the different work involved and say, it feels reasonable that this is probably a 20% goal, looking at availability. We know other construction work going on, let's say, with the city, uh, that might eat into some of the capacity of minority and women-owned businesses. But all those factors, let's set a 20% goal on this, because that's, um, that seems a reasonable aggregation of all the different factors. And then you'd sort of document that. That would go in solicitation documents, and what prime contractors would see is, this is still lowest and most responsive, lowest responsive bidder, but as a condition of award, as a condition of being responsive, you have to come in with 20% going to minority and women-owned businesses, or good-faith efforts that you tried to meet that 20% and failed to do so. But, uh, it can't just be sort of perfunctory, check-the-box exercises. It's a narrative about who you reached out to, what happened with those negotiations, a variety of other good-faith efforts, um, that could be counted. And that would be treated equally as actually meeting the goal, but the idea is, is that it can't be a release valve. They can't just opt to submit good-faith efforts because it's easier. They have to go through the process, and hopefully, in most cases, that's actually leading to participation. The good-faith efforts exist just because programs like this have to show flexibility, otherwise, it's essentially a quota, and that's legally dicey. Um, so that's basically how it would work. And then usually, when we've worked with organizations to set up these programs, you, you sort of evaluate the bids in, in, in more or less the same way. You, you look at the apparent low bidder. Have they met all the contracting requirements? And one of them is, have they met the contracting goal requirements? And if they have, through commitments, they're good. They're the low bidder and apparent awardee. If they haven't, did they submit good-faith efforts, and are they sufficient? If they are, again, they're the apparent awardee, everything's good. If they didn't, their bid gets tossed out as non-responsive, and you go to the next bidder. So it's a program that has teeth, um, but it's also the most direct way, and if, uh, direct way to encourage minority and women-owned business participation, and it's designed carefully and correctly, um, uh, it's effective and legally defensible. It's just that you have to dot all the i's and cross all the t's.
Well, it, it's the one that seems the most obvious to me.
Yep.
You know, this, if we're trying to reach a goal, this one helps us reach the goal pretty directly, it seems to me. Um, as opposed to the more aspirational goals in item number one, develop aspiration. We've already been doing aspirational goals. You know, I think the idea is to get us in a more direct line with, um, having percentages that we're trying to meet and make everybody know that's, uh, contracting with the county. These are the percentages we're trying to meet and, and kind of hold their feet to the fire. So then, as, as we evaluate that, and they commit to 20%, say, um, then on the compliance side, as you say, what happens then?
Um, so organizations that don't have great programs will do everything up until award, and then forget that prime contractors and businesses are still businesses. So if it's cheaper for them and better for business not to meet their commitment, there's a good chance they might do that. So compliance along the way is important, where, uh, they are submitting the payments they made to their subcontractors, which ones of those are minority and women-owned, which ones of those were committed to, to meet the goal at the beginning, and make sure through the end of the project that whatever they committed to those subcontractors at the beginning is what they got through the life of the project. And if it's not, they have to answer to the county as to why there's a difference. Uh, is that difference justified? And sometimes organizations will have retainers in place or withhold final payment until they're satisfied with the explanation they get, or the prime contractor figures it out and gets the money they committed at the beginning of the project to win the project to the subcontractors that they used for those commitments. So it is an ongoing compliance process that goes on through the life of it, and, um, checking in with the county that, hey, this project's supposed to be 18 months. It's now 14 months, and we don't see the payments to minority and women-owned subcontractors that you committed to them. What's going on? Those sorts of conversations and explanations along the way.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Just have one, one other question related to the percentages. So, um, and I met with Robert, um, earlier about the report. So it's, correct, uh, correct me if I'm, I'm just trying to understand this. So as we do this, and, you know, you, you have this, um, and you evaluated availability of certain services um, to make sure we understand that we're not overshooting something, right? If it's not available, we, we shouldn't be reaching for a certain goal. So the idea is to have a goal that is reasonable and within the parameters that you guys have investigated. Is this 20% or 26% then, that minority and women-owned business, is that the threshold?
No, um, so I, this is kind of why it's helpful to have that overall aspirational goal as well. That 26% really represents, over the course of some period of time, like a year, uh, one might expect 26% of your dollars to go to minority and women-owned businesses, based on their availability. The race and gender-conscious contract goals that we're talking about is one tool to help get to that 26%. But, uh, it should be tailored specifically to the realities of the contract itself. So sometimes that goal could be much higher than 26% because of the work involved. Sometimes it could be way lower. Sometimes you might look at a contract and say, this, there actually shouldn't be a goal on this, because there's just no availability here, and we, it just wouldn't be fair to force prime contractors to find this if we can't even think of where they would go looking for it. So the idea is, in aggregate, the use of contract-specific goals is a powerful tool to help you get to that 26%. But it has to work in concert with all the other things that we've talked about as well. So small business goals are a good idea, subcontracting goals don't necessarily, uh, or using, um, race-conscious goals don't preclude you from using, uh,
Right.
race-neutral goals and things of that nature. So when they're all working together, hopefully, you have a program where you've got race and gender-conscious measures in place that are narrowly tailored and you can use while you need them. But you also have other things in place that are helping small businesses build up and become more competitive for this work, working at the same time. Um, and it also avoids problems like you often see with, with lots of programs, where, uh, prime contractors also get comfortable with the same minority and women-owned businesses. So the same four or five minority and women-owned businesses benefit from these types of programs. But there are ways to sort of avoid that, so you get different types of businesses that they're using, uh, for different types of work. So, um, it's really a combination of all of that, that hopefully results in sort of sustainable use of minority and women-owned businesses over time.
Right, okay, thank you. It, it does get to this culture idea that it's not just one thing, right? It's not just one strategy, it's all of the strategies.
Yeah.
To create an environment where we are a welcoming organization to minority and women-owned businesses. So thanks again for, uh, the information, and thanks to the partners in the room.
Of course, thank you. Thank you for the privilege of doing this work.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just a couple comments, um, because they stirred up just a little bit of, um, stuff for me. Just a couple comments, because they stirred up just a little bit of stuff for me. Administration, I want to thank them, because I thought that Robert Bell was here. You came in '18. I came right at the beginning of '19. I thought you were here because I was coming. That I was going to raise sand about inclusion, but obviously, the administration already knew that there was an issue, and we need to deal with it. And so I thank Robert for all his hard work by himself, and now adding on some staff to, to bring us to this point. But I want to also thank Jeff for recognizing that there was an issue that we needed to, to deal with. Just specifically, and you don't have to really answer this now, but the role of MSDGC. As we look at subcontract, they're like off the chart for Asian-American owned and Black American owned for subcontract. And I, I would just like to know, was that a trajectory that they were gradually going up? Or did they know we were, that we were kind of stirring the pot about, are you doing what you need to do? You know, was it through five years of time? Or did this just happen like the last year or two?
I'll have to get you details on that. So I don't off the top of my head in time where that, that participation came from. But, you know, in aggregate at least, I would suspect that it's, it's not uncommon when you have a small business program, for example, or a large project that may have been awarded during your study period, that you get these chunks going to particular businesses that happen to be Black American or Asian-American or, or another group. Part of that could be the small business goals that MSD is using, but I, I would just need more details about when that work took place and what contracts.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
But we can get that to you.
Okay. And the question came up, how fast do we move? Well, we've identified that this is a priority for us. So how fast we move is the board makes that decision. And we, it's a priority for us, and we give clear direction to administration of how we're going to move forward to make that happen. So I thank all of you for your hard work. It's been very helpful, and we're going to get busy. So thank you so much. Robert, did you want to make a?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, thank you, Mary. Of course.
Just want to add, yeah, we're, we're going to be sending you a list of, we distilled the, what?
No, go on.
We distilled the, 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 the recommendations into a list of 25. You're going to be getting that in a couple of days. I'm working with Jeff right now to kind of lay out a timeline that we wanted to present to you guys and what it would entail, probably around first of next week. And then, and then we'll start from there. We, we're not going to sit on this. We want to move as quickly as we can. I want to get you, you know, because the biggest thing is, is to determine what recommendations we want to move forward with right now. We may not want all 25, but some of the things, Commissioner Reese, that you mentioned too, and that, that you mentioned is in there. The, the unbundling and all that kind of thing. And so we need from you, what are your priorities? And so that's what we're going to be working on starting next week, and hopefully get that settled pretty quick, so that we can then move into, you know, looking at which ones, and then developing the resolutions, developing the strategies, and that kind of thing.
Okay.
So you'll hear from us next week.
Yeah, and I wanted to know, who picked this picture?
They did.
That was you? Because when you look at us like bloom and doom, you should have had something like bright and, you know what I'm saying? But that's okay, because it's not.
I wanted the words to pop.
Oh, is that what you wanted? Oh, okay.
The other, the other thing I wanted to add is, this is, we're in a perfect time, because, because we, you know, all the stuff that we need to do to follow up that Commissioner Drewhouse was talking about, and how do we measure and stuff? We're going to be, we're, you know, we're this, in the next, this year, we're going to have the procurement and economic inclusion software that, that's going to give us a lot of that stuff that we're looking at to do and monitor from all, so subcontract, the, you know, different tier levels of subcontract, prime contracts, payments, payroll, all the kind, all that kind of, and really be, really be collaborative, you know, be, be coordinated within the whole organization. So different departments are not just doing some different things. So we're really looking forward to that, and we've, we've planned this. We've planned it to, to merge all this stuff together, because we know we're going to need it.
Yeah, you can see the work that's been done, for sure.
And brighter pictures, for sure.
Brighter pictures, yeah. Thank you all so much. We're going to move forward to, we have agenda item four and five. I'm going to read them separately. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD. And then item number five, a motion to go to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G4 to discuss collective bargaining. Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drewhouse.
Yes.
Madam President, if I could just very briefly, there will likely be action after the final executive session. I don't expect these to take very long, but just for the, of other folks in the room who may want to stay around.
Right.